...board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to go ahead and take a moment here to introduce our board and staff members here, present today. On the audience's right is Jake Christensen. Next to him is Dave Gare, and next to him is Linda Westergaard. On the audience's left, he's not here at the moment, but Brooke Rosenberg will be joining us shortly. Next to him is Cindy Smith. We have one vacancy today. We have seven board members. We'll have six present. We do have one member that has to leave around a little bit before 3:00, but if our agenda's moving along, that probably won't be an issue. I'm the board chair, Mel Pins. I'll introduce our staff. Our staff attorney is Roger Brown. To my left, Bert Droste, city planner, Eric Lundie, city planner, Anu Minhas, city planner, and our zoning enforcement officer is Sue Ann Donovan. I'm going to take a couple of minutes here to go over the procedure here for today so everybody has an idea of how this hearing works, because for some of you, this may be the only time you'll be in front of this board. For some, you might be here once in a while, but a reminder never hurts. First of all, this is an open and informal meeting. It's being recorded. It's also being broadcast and probably will be broadcast in many reruns on the city's cable channel. The board members have received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations prior to this meeting. For those of you who are appellants, or if you're in the audience, we have copies of the agenda and the staff recommendations on your item. Those are available in the tray by the door here. So if you want to grab one of those, feel free to stand up and run and grab one here. The way our procedure works is, this board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief that the applicant seeks. The law applicable to each case is identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrate that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. Each appeal will be announced in order, and the staff will present a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified during the staff presentation. The appellant or a representative of the appellant is then allowed to speak first after the staff does kind of their introductory presentation. The appellant will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. Then, anyone else present in support of the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments, followed by anyone present in opposition to the appeal. They'll also be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. The applicant will then be allowed up to three minutes for rebuttal or any other closing comments. We ask that if you want to speak either as the appellant or speak for or against an item, you're requested to only speak from the podium. You must be recognized from the chair to speak. When you approach the podium, please begin your presentation by giving both your name and your local address. All speakers must focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Once we hear all the comments, the board will then close any further public comment on that agenda item, and the board will then immediately deliberate the request and make a decision. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until at least tomorrow to go down to the permit and development center to apply for any building permits. That gives us time to give a little heads up to our staff that we've given you a thumbs up. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is the first grouping of agenda items, we will not discuss those items on the consent agenda individually. We'll consider those for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless for some reason an individual present or a member of this board requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. So if you're on consent and we quickly discuss those items and you stay there, we're going to vote as a group to approve those. There may be some conditions that go with it, but we can help you with that if you've got questions. In closing, the decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court, so if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations as a whole that are applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations. All material written or otherwise used or presented today as part of any presentation will become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. So be prepared to leave any photos or at least copies of photos or anything else that you want to present today. Just a couple of housekeeping items before we begin. We ask that you please avoid conversation in the audience so as to not be disruptive or distracting from the hearing that is in progress. Please ensure that your cellphone ringer has been silenced. That goes for our board members as well. And once the agenda item that you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing. You don't have to sit and wait for a break or for us to dismiss you. So when your agenda item is up, you're free to get up and leave. If you need to use a restroom, you can leave through the main door here to the council chambers, walk all the way through the atrium to the far north end, and there are some restrooms there on your left. And finally, if we need to, there will be a 10-minute break in the hearing around 3:00 or 3:30 if we still have enough agenda items to get to. So, that's our procedure for the day. So to start with, we have our consent agenda. We originally had seven items on the consent agenda, items 1 through 7, and we do have a few changes and some recommendations on those. Bert?
Mr. Chair members of the board, Bert Droste, planner for the city. Item number 6 will have to be discussed today. It's the appeal at 1423 High Street. We do have somebody in the audience who would like to address the board who is in opposition to that, so we'll have to have that removed from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Then, item number 7 on the consent agenda has been withdrawn. That was the request from Calvin Community at 4210 Hickman Road. So there will not be a hearing on that item today. And then, item number 14, which is an appeal at 201 East Locust Street. Staff would be comfortable having that item moved to the consent agenda. The applicant is in agreement with the staff recommendation, and we have received no objections to that. What this item is, is it's an appeal to allow a new hotel to be built at 201 East Locust Street that would have a maximum height of 75 feet, and it's in a district that the maximum height allowed is 55 feet. So they'd need an exception of 20 feet over the allowed 55-foot height, so. And while we're on this item, we do have one slight change to staff recommendation for that item. We've revised condition number 3 to be, "Any building shall comply with the conceptual development plan as contained in the development agreement approved by city council." And we've taken out, or I guess revised, from requiring it to be subject to review of the design review board and just done.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that item 14? Kind of work backwards here.
I might just add a friendly comment to what Bert said. On item 14, there are buildings that are that height, but the code reads as a non-residential. So we would be matching that height limitation for residential buildings.
And on this item 14, this is at the location of the former Bud Mulcahy's Chrysler dealership here.
Right. And as Mr. Christensen said, if this building were entirely residential, it could be 75 feet high.
Okay.
But because it's a commercial use, they're limited to 55 feet.
Okay. And even as a commercial use, it's pretty close to Embassy Suites right here, and that's taller yet?
Over 80 feet tall.
Okay. All right. So it wouldn't necessarily be the tallest building on that stretch here to begin with.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's go ahead and look at item 14 then. Do we want any motion to move that to consent?
Mr. Chair, I would move item 14 to consent agenda.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll put that on, well, I suppose we should vote to put it on consent then. All right, we've got a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, aye. Okay, item 6, we all, let's see, that's on the regular, and item 7 was withdrawn. Okay. So that leaves us with items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 14, with exceptions and variance requests and exceptions for approval. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Oh, yes. Our trustee attorney says, good point, is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 14? Okay. Thank you, Roger. Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion then to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would approve the consent items as noted.
Okay. Have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 6 to 0. Okay, so if you were here for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 14, you have been approved with the conditions the city has. If you need permits, check in tomorrow with Permit and Development Center. Thank you for coming. Okay, so this will bring us to item number 6.
But before we get into the public hearing items, I wanted to mention item number 8, which is the appeal at 500 Grand Avenue. They have requested a continuance. This item continued from the March meeting so that they could conduct the audit to determine whether or not this business is actually operating as a food sales establishment or a liquor store. And they have still not completed that audit, so they're asking for one more month to get that. Staff's not opposed to the request, so.
Do we have anybody here that is here to speak in opposition to that item number 8? Okay, are there any questions of staff from the board on that request for continuance?
It would be May 28.
Okay. I guess my only question would be, how long does it usually take to get these done? Do they have some extenuating circumstance, or?
It sounds like people are on vacation, the auditor was busy with taxis, and they've had some reasonable excuses.
Sure. Okay. All right, so we'd move this to the next regularly scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion on the table to move item 8 to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Adjustment?
I make a motion to move item 8. We continue till next month.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Okay, so that takes one item off the regular agenda, but we put item 6 on. Is that where we'll start then?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Eric Lundie, senior city planner. Item 6 is a request for exception of parking. What is causing this to come about is the, there's a proposal to use a portion of the building for a restaurant, which increases the required parking count based on the calculation for restaurant, which is one space per 150 square feet of gross floor area. So that drives up the total required parking spaces to 19. Right now, I believe they're providing 11 based on how this layout was provided. In addition to that, they're going to be subject to a site plan. I'll give you a little overview. This is the building. I believe there's printing and storage going on in the property right now. I think it's the only structure on the block. If you go back at the aerial. The other thing I should point out is that the alley in the block has been vacated. However, that was subject to getting access for loading on this building, so there is some rights for the property to have access through other adjoining properties on the block as part of that vacation. This is looking down High Street to the west, northwest, and then this is looking a little further west of the building to the west along High Street. The proposed layout for parking as proposed was provided with the appeal as follows. So most of the block would be off-street parking. I believe that it's used for Iowa Health Systems. This property would be kind of self-contained, however, it would have some access through to get to that parking on the north of the building and loading functions such as trash, service, that type of thing. Then there would be a smaller lot here in the front as well, with direct access off In terms of written comments, we've only received comments from the Downtown Neighborhood Association in support of the project. I do understand that there's somebody here to represent the property owner that would be in opposition, so you'll probably be hearing from them just after this. I think staff's primary concern is that everything that's being done here conforms to site plan requirements so that we get all the dimensions and adequate maneuvering provided. We also want to make sure any conversion of the space within the building itself that's triggering the parking requirement is also done in conformance with our building codes that we apply. So, other than that, are there any questions?
Questions for Eric? Two very brief ones. Eric, if we've got an office above on second story subway below, 11 parking spaces, that doesn't sound like very many. That's less than 60% of the required. Did you take into account neighboring available parking or any agreements?
Well, when we looked at the impact on the essential character, I mean, certainly I can understand the concern. There's parking that's private and restricted completely around this that, you know, the general public isn't going to have the right to park on. However, this is in a portion of the downtown. The predominant zoning, just in the immediate area, becomes C3-type zoning, which has no parking requirement for this type of use.
Okay.
So there's a kind of a character, this is in a transitional area where that character would assume some amount of parking happening on public streets. I know this, with this connection to the new extension of High Street that was done with the Wellmark project, there's probably no street parking along in here. This segment over here, I believe you can park, but then there's, as you can see in the aerial, there's parking going on within the adjoining public streets. The other thing is, it's walkable to many of the, you know, a large number of employers for lunch period, that type of thing. So I think the predominance of the traffic might be foot traffic.
Okay. Excellent. Any other questions for Eric? Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant.
May it please the board. My name is Joe Gamble. I'm with the Duncan and Green Law Firm, 400 Locust Street. Represent technically not what is listed as the appellant or applicant, but rather the SK Inc., which wants to operate the subway on High Street. By the way, I did walk here today. My client is wishing to move their subway restaurant from actually the same street address on Grand, 1423, up a couple of blocks up to High Street. This is a little bit unique because we've got an existing business here. They've been running there for about two years, and they've actually been, I think it's C3 where they are, there is no off-street parking, and it hasn't been a problem because this is all foot traffic from the workers of the neighboring businesses such as Wellmark, Nationwide, Principal, perhaps even Iowa Health or Unity Point, which you're going to hear from in a little bit, and maybe even the new development, which is going to be just a little bit south of where my client wants to go in. This is a downtown area. We don't usually have any off-street parking. In this, they've got it set up where they are going to have some, even though they haven't needed any in their past space. Technically, this is a restaurant, but it is almost all to-go orders. People that walk there, get their lunch, and leave. In fact, this place is going to have less tables than their location on Grand. They don't expect to have any greater car traffic than what they've already had, and they've had no problem on Grand. They have car traffic that goes to other stores like the Ingersoll store or the East 14th store. We just don't rely on traffic, car traffic here. It's all foot traffic, and we've got experience to back that up. In fact, we've, my client has had their customers on Friday do a survey, and it shows that the vast majority of these people that are visiting the subway are walking there, and they're mostly from the businesses in Gateway West. And I'd like to offer this at the appropriate time.
Sure.
The attraction to this part of the city is the workers being able to walk and do things like grab lunch. It's better for the environment, it's healthier for the workers, and that's why this requested exception would be in harmony with the essential character of the downtown neighborhood. We know we have the Downtown Neighborhood Association recommending this and on board with it. As far as I can tell, the opposition to this comes from Unity Point, which operates Methodist Hospital, and I believe owns parking lots around here. I believe what you'll hear is the concern about subway customers using those spots, and I don't think that is going to be a problem for the reasons previously mentioned. I also note that I believe there is signage on this parking currently prohibiting unauthorized use. We see that all over downtown and all over everywhere. Signage telling people that you can't park here, and you, I mean, sometimes it specifically says not subway parking. That's one way to handle that potential, well, I don't believe it's a potential problem, but if someone believes it is, that's what you could do. Or you could restrict access from the south and just make it so you come in from the north. There are plenty of ways to handle this, and I just don't believe it's going to be I understand I get a short rebuttal if necessary. If there are any questions, I can try to answer those now.
Any questions for Mr. Gamble? Okay, thank you, Joe. We'll check back with you in a little bit here.
Oh.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? All right, seeing none, is there anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition? Step right up.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, my name is William Lillis. My address is 317 Suite 300, 317 Sixth Avenue, I should say, Suite 300. I don't want to necessarily say that we're in opposition to the request because we agree in part, but we disagree in part. So I think this is the appropriate time for us to indicate our concerns. We have a limitation of time, so I'll try to be very brief. We represent number one, Unity Point, but technically Central Iowa, properties that own the property that Eric has talked about, which is all of the property that surrounds this building. We're quite familiar with it. Staff is correct. In fact, this might show better in the application of the applicant. This would be the building, approximately 8,000 square foot site, and the building represents two stories each, about roughly 3,000 square feet. So there's very limitation, very limited site. The application makes requests for an exception. We don't disagree with the request. We might disagree with the count. The exception, of course, being that there's 19 parking spaces required. On this presentation, I'd like to file, or this site plan, rather, it shows that the parking required is 19 total for the site, and I think that they're showing that there are 11. The problem with the requirement for the parking, 15 of the 19 are necessary for the restaurant. We have no objection on behalf of the adjoining property owner to the use of office. That is, in fact, the CO zoning line runs down where the old alley was, and so this is CO, and the surrounding property is all C2. So the south half of the block is C2, the north half of the block is CO, as is most of the campus at Iowa Methodist, excuse me, Iowa Health, now Unity Point. The QuickTrip has a property across the street that's C2. In the zoning map, and I'd like to file or send a copy of that zoning map around, we disagree with the staff's comment that this is downtown. We recognize it's on the fringe of downtown, but this area from this point on to the west is all C2-zoned. C2 is a different classification altogether. It does mandate or require off-street parking. I want to reiterate to the board that the objection is not as to an office. If they wanted to have office, that's one thing, but the concerns we have is that this use, although it's maybe different where it's located now, a subway that takes up generally the, almost all the first floor, it appears to us in the application, will mandate people coming parking. This area here to the east, it's shown over on this drawing, north, south, east, west, it's an alley. The alley was vacated, and with the cooperation and agreement of the present property owner, who is technically the applicant, but we cannot block it off. We can't because it requires us to keep the alley from High on the south to Woodland on the north and all of this area to be open. It's a rather wide alley, but this parking that you see against the building is Iowa Health parking, and all the other parking that you see is Iowa Health. There technically, I think, if you get down to it, there are 10 parking spaces, although they're marked 11. One is for trash, and so I'm assuming that the restaurant would need that trash. So the requirement of 19 parking spaces, and 15 of which would be required under the C2 ordinance for a restaurant, is our concern. If you have that office, it's, we can live with that. So we say we have an objection to the request for an exception. The technicality is, it's 19 required. They have, say, 10 or even 11, and that they have eight, therefore it's less than the 50%, and so we understand the ordinance. However, and due to a limitation of time, Mr. Chair, I want to respect that.
Thank you.
We do object to the staff's comment that this is, the exception, if granted by the board, would be within the intended spirit and harmony and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and would not materially affect the, you know, the other property owners in the neighborhood. We foresee human nature as it is, that someone that comes to Subway and they want to dash in and they want to dash out, and this parking is available because it can't be gated, and somebody's out there, those are all marked, no parking, recognizing people, many times don't respect that, no parking, that we will have a problem. And we think that the C2 zoning mandates the off-street parking, and we do not agree with the staff comments. The alternative would be to allow for the use of the building, pardon me, as office, as I mentioned, but not to permit any type of a restaurant. We'd welcome your questions. There are a couple, there's a letter that I'd like to file that pretty much states that. I've not filed it, but I do want to note in the record that we have a concern for, in fact, I have extra copies.
Thank you.
And then, Joe, I'll give you one also.
I will send you a copy.
Okay. So we'd like to ask that that letter be received, filed, and made a part of your record, and we also would like to send around a copy of the zoning ordinance, which really shows the area and demonstrates better than I can explain it in the short period of time we have, that this really is a C2 area, and it's not C3 or C3A. And I don't want to parrot or read the letter, because you can all obviously read.
You can just put it down there and I'll put it in.
Okay. Exhibit B.
Put it, it's 3.
3, okay. But that shows, and then we'll send it around, but it shows a circle in this area.
Yeah.
So we can show you where we're talking about.
Mm-hmm. Right, right south of the orange.
It's right here where my finger would be.
Yep.
So the north half is orange, that's CO. The south half is C2. And you can see the C2 runs basically along High Street and where Ingersoll turns, and then you get into Central Business District. I guess our point is, and our concern is, that this really isn't Central Business District. This isn't C3, it isn't C3A. Granted, it's in a transition, but C2 is a horse of a whole different color. Yeah, I pass these to the board.
Yes, sure, that's fine. If you've got a copy for the record, that's If you got a copy for the record, that's great. All right, well, Mr. Lillis, could we ask you a few questions?
Sure.
Any questions from the board members?
Questions?
Yes, Brooke.
Since this restaurant's being moved, the subway's being moved to make room for a come and goes headquarters, is my understanding, do you have any suggestions on where you have a vacant piece of ground that the hospital owns? Is that available?
We don't want to interfere with the contractual relationship of this party with the other parties here, but yes, we do have vacant land within the area that could be a place that probably would be more fitting than this location, but we don't want to get involved in that discussion, but we certainly would be open to that if the board chooses not to grant this, but...
Because it, and I don't, I don't expect you to answer this directly, but it seems odd that the hospital doesn't own that one little piece of land anyhow to me. I don't know what the past history is, but I'm sure there's some.
I can speak to that. We, I don't ever like to use the word covet, but that's probably, maybe a poor choice of terms, but the property owners and the hospital have talked about the possibility of the hospital acquiring it, but our understanding is that they want to lease and they did not want to sell. So that's not the reason we're here. But the real concern dates back a few years ago when we vacated the alley. This was the original alley, east and west, ladies and gentlemen, this was the alley north and south. And so what has been built out is, I call it the T, with the concurrence of the property owner, because they wanted to be sure that they could, using that, at that time, the property wasn't vacant, they would be able to get their trucks back in and out, and then to pay goods and so forth. So you cannot physically close this off, either on the south side or the north side. You can mark it, which we've done, but if it wasn't a restaurant, we wouldn't have a concern. We'd say, you know, the office would be fine, but the restaurant, we just dare say, now serving breakfast, lunch, so forth, that we literally would have to have some police person there all the time to say, "You can't park here."
Sure.
So that's, and when you go up there and you look at the QuickTrip across the street, for example, it's a beehive of people in and out, and it's C2, and so we have some legitimate, we might some legitimate concerns.
There's no way to get just access from the east-west alley, so you could close off the north-south, is that correct?
That'd be true. The, it's kind of difficult to see there, this is probably a better demonstration of how this is. This is the north-south alley, this was an east-west alley, and the east-west alley was vacated. This was built out in lieu of the east-west, because what the hospital wanted to do, and it's part of the vacation process back through several years ago, about five years ago, is that if the hospital wants to build a building where my hand is, that bisecting of that half-block would be a problem. So we worked out this arrangement, you can't go to the east, you can only go south, and you can only go north, but without any question, you don't want to, you can't close off as part of the vacations today.
It doesn't show well.
No, the other map doesn't really reflect, it reflects what it used to be, and this is no longer, and this is no longer, to this, this way.
They haven't combined the parcels yet.
Yeah. They have, that's, that's what it said, the parcels haven't been combined. We called it the T and the L, you know, so there were two different options, but the building has been built out, or, excuse me, the alley has been built out as a T.
Mr. Lillis, if you know this, great, if you don't, it's not a big deal, but to your knowledge, does the parking lot is, are all those parking areas that you own filled during the business day primarily?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, that's one of the major concerns, Mr. Penn's a member of the board, is that the hospital needs each and every parking spot they have.
Right.
When High Street was redesigned and rebuilt a few years ago, actually Ingersoll, at that corner, if you go over to where the phone company is, what is that, 10th and High, we lost a lot of parking spaces there.
Okay.
So this has always been something that is in lieu of the parking spaces that have been lost. But we simply want to be a good neighbor, we don't want to infringe upon, you know, be a police party that would have to say, "You have to get out of here," and you can't, you know, slip in there.
Right.
This alley is, for this driveway here, is pretty wide.
Sure.
So I dare say that if somebody really wants to go into the park, into the subway, if that would happen, they probably would park, although they shouldn't, they probably would.
And Mr. Lillis, you referenced this, I think, kind of just some sideline comments. You don't have gates, but you do have signs, is that correct?
We have signs, yes, we have signs all along here, let's say, no parking, Unity Point parking only.
Right, you've got that in your other lot entrances to the west and the north?
We do.
Okay.
In fact, this is, this is gated off over here on the 15th Street, and this is gated on, but we can't.
Okay, you can't gate that off, so you have signs.
Cannot gate it off.
I got you.
I would like to file this other letter, Eric, and for the record, note that we have objection only as to the restaurant use, no objection if they choose to have it for an office use. May I pass these about?
Sure. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Lillis? Okay. Sure, I'll just give you one more, one more moment, and then we need to move on with the hearing. All right, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, no other questions for Mr. Lillis? All right.
Thank you very much.
You bet, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the applicant's proposal? Okay, do we have any other questions for staff? You need this one? What?
I believe there is someone here to speak in favor of it.
Well, we had an opportunity to do that earlier, Brian, but considering you're at the back of the class, if you'd like to step up, I'll let you give a comment in support. I ask that you kind of be brief here so we can continue with our agenda.
Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning board of adjustment, Brian Miller, 3920 Leonard Drive, guilty of not paying attention. I didn't know this item was before you, so I'm going to be very brief about it. I know this type of business, and I know this franchisee, and I know the location they've been at, and I know how he operates his business, and certainly, the business could change hands. However, this business downtown has been walking traffic. It's very rare to have even two cars out in front of it, if that. I believe the same will happen here. I understand people wanting to keep their parking lots their own, and people always park in parking lots that shouldn't all over, but usually there's repercussions to that. I don't think that's going to be the case in this. I believe this individual has a hardship in finding something close by similar and everything and stuff, so I would just urge you to consider that.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Okay, any further questions for staff? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
Sir, if you have a...
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, since we got a little bit out of order there. If you have three, you have up to three minutes for any rebuttal closing comments.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Mr. Gamble.
No problem. It appears the central, or the essential character of the neighborhood might be changing a little bit. We just have a ton of workers that need somewhere to have lunch, and that's, again, the reason why people want to work downtown, is so they can walk places like that. This idea of QuickTrip being a beehive, it's a gas station. They're selling gas to people driving cars, that's not what we're doing. We are selling sandwiches to foot traffic, we have had no off-street parking, the minimal on-street parking has been sufficient, we're going to have that here as well. And one other important point, we are going to be leasing some parking from Boyd Sherman for our employees, and so everything we have is usable for people that we're going to be serving sandwiches to, and they're going to be walking anyway. So it's just not going to be a problem. Parking can be enforced with signs, parking tickets, tow trucks, et cetera. We have parking. For these reasons, we respectfully request the exception.
Okay. All right, any questions for Joe? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Closing the public portion, going to board deliberation. Thoughts?
I'll make a comment. What concerns me is not so much the immediate issue as the longer-term issue. This building sits, for whatever reason, right smack dab in the middle of Unity Point's property, and at some point, I can't imagine that the hospital isn't going to want to build something there, and that's going to cause an issue long-term. I'd rather look long-term. They have that large green space, to me, looks like about the same, or maybe even a little bigger, and I, it would be nice if there, and maybe there has been some discussion about a swap, a buy, a sell, whatever you want to call it, and then that whole three-quarters of a block or more would be all condensed into Unity Point. I'm just concerned long-term. I see both sides, to be honest, and I would probably agree that most of it's walk-in traffic, but what do we do four, three years, four years from now when the hospital wants to absorb all that, and this subway has to move again? I'm just, I'm just bringing it up. It just seems like it's in the, right smack dab in the middle of a, of a long-term development.
Okay, any other comments? And without kind of getting into more details, I think that green space might be some stormwater retention, but I'm not sure, and so you have to have a certain amount of stormwater retention for parking areas, so I'm wondering if those are some stormwater channels, that little gray speck?
It could be, right?
Yeah. All right, any other comments? Roger?
I just ask you to not to consider, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just ask you not to consider, you know, reserving this for the hospital.
Right.
That would not be an appropriate basis for a decision and might result in a adverse action on appeal.
Yes. A logical question might be, this might not look like it fits, but at the same time, it's the decision before us is the issue at hand, what's being requested, correct, Roger?
Yeah.
And so we need to evaluate our response on both what the applicant presented as, as well as other comments we've received for the record. Okay, subject to any other thoughts, any direction? Anybody want to put something out there?
Well, my, my thought is, is that I do, I understand Unity Point's concerns about parking, but it is a building, it is suitable for subway, it looks to me like we need places for people to eat. The applicant did submit something where they took a survey, and it looks like most of the people are walk-in traffic. You know, the city, in their, in their minds, felt that it was appropriate. I, I think I'm going to support it. I'm sorry.
I'd ask the board members, just check your microphones before you make a comment, just as a reminder, or it doesn't show up on television or the record, just clearly.
I just think that that's something for us to consider, that it's only a block north, they get a lot of walk-in traffic, you've got people that are parking around there, working around there. It does seem appropriate to me.
Okay. All right, somebody got a motion out there?
I would make a motion to move staff recommendations, then.
Yes.
One second.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Let's check that again. How many were opposed? Right hand up. That's four opposed. Four opposed and two four, so the motion fails. Are there any other motions on the table? If there are none, then by default, the staff cannot, or then the board cannot grant approval of the requested variances and exceptions requested. Correct?
Yes, but it would be helpful to have an expression from those in opposition of the, well, I presume the record would, we will reflect in the order.
Excuse me, I have a question on that. Why would it be helpful? I mean, you said we shouldn't take in long-term considerations, we voted on the, on the zoning proposal as it was. I don't, I object to that, that, I object.
What we can do is memorialize the comments by those who voted in opposition to it.
Right.
I'll share mine.
Yes, go ahead, Jake.
I think that the request for variances depended on showing a hardship. It's zoned for office, it's an, it's an appropriate office location, and, and so...
Mr. Chair, it's not a variance request, it's an exception.
Exception, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not based on a hardship.
It's practical difficulty, which is...
So...
We had requested variances and exception at the property, correct? Or no, whoops, I'm, okay.
It's just an exception.
Just the exception, okay. All right? Just for clarification for the record.
The test is not hardship, so...
Okay, all right.
What is the test, then?
It's a practical difficulty based on the existing land and, as it's configured.
There are four options there, bottom of page...
They're, basically, their ability to provide the amount of parking is prohibitive due to the fact they don't have enough area on their property to accommodate the number of spaces, so that generally fits within the practical difficulty argument.
And if I can ask, Eric, didn't you say at their current location, they don't have any off-street parking?
Correct, and that, it does have a different zoning, but...
Yeah.
From my perspective, and I've been trying to keep my comments brief, but at the same time, and even looking at the exception, we need to see that we've got a necessary, reasonable, practical difficulty here. We had a previous professional business that was operating here. Neither the appellant or the, those with concern expressed that there was a problem with parking before, but bringing a restaurant use in, we now have two uses on one parcel. From that perspective, looking at 11 to 19 spaces, that's a very large reduction. Also, in looking at the survey, while I really appreciate them doing their survey, they didn't tabulate the totals. A quick review of that would show that, I would guess, a third to 40 percent of the folks were still driving there. If you saw, there were a lot of folks that were still driving there. There was at least a quarter to a half on each page, out of four respondents, one to two were still driving. So I would be concerned moving it out further from the downtown core into the C2, we would still have more people driving, therefore, we're going to have pressure on a neighboring business. It's not their job to be towing, it's not their job to be calling the police. If they've got it signed and it's going to cause some concerns for them, I think the exception would affect the essential character of the neighborhood and the area around there. So that was my basis for my vote.
Thank you.
The other thing is that the, a similar condition exists, I believe this is a dong at 15th and High, and according to this map, is zoned MPC. It would seem like maybe a rezoning would be more in order if they want to have a similar condition.
Okay, so...
We will memorialize the order with those reasons.
Okay, excellent, okay. So the vote was two to four to approve the requested exception, and that vote failed, there were no other motions on the table, so, so therefore, we cannot approve the requested exception. Okay, so, moving on in the agenda, that brings us to item nine, 3805 and 3807, Sixth Avenue, and a conditional use permit request.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this item is for a conditional use permit that would allow Lynn's Supermarket, which is a maybe 568-square-foot limited food sales establishment, to continue to sell beer and wine, so long as no more than 40 percent of their sales are derived from beer, wine, or tobacco products. The site is on the east side of Sixth Avenue, just north of the Highland Park commercial node. Here is the floor plan of the business. You can see their beer is kept in the cooler, and the wine is kept at the back of the store. Here is a few site photos. See their parking along the south side of the building.
Mm-hmm.
side of the building, the main entrance, and from the northwest corner of the building. And then here's the consent map with the cards going around. All of the cards we received were in support. The requested conditional use permit would allow them to just continue to operate as they have been. As you know, a few years ago, the city council amended the zoning ordinance to require all of these businesses selling alcohol to come in for conditional use permits after January 1st of 2014. So we feel that this business has demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting a conditional use permit. We feel it's adequately safeguarding the residents in the immediate vicinity. So we've recommended approval, subject to basically the standard list of conditions. I won't go through all of them, but again, most important is that the sale of beer and wine cannot exceed 40% of their overall sales on the premises. Are there any questions?
This is a longstanding business. It's been there for a long time. One of the few mom-and-pop, let's call it, grocery stores left. What happens if it exceeds 40% of gross revenues? This is a pretty important grocery store in that vicinity. I mean, because the law was changed, it's, I presume that's why they're before us.
Even before the law was changed, they were still required to keep their sales of alcohol to less than 50%
Right.
of their overall sales. If they would exceed 40% of the sales, they would have to get a new conditional use permit for a liquor store?
Well, 40%, because the law changing includes tobacco products now, correct?
Correct.
So, just off top of my head, is it a detriment to these small mom-and-pop that are literally grocery stores? That's what they were always there for.
I would let the applicant address that question, but I don't believe they're in danger of exceeding that 40% threshold.
Okay. Any other questions for Bert? Okay. And Bert, did we have on the consent map, do we have one negative comment there?
No.
No, we didn't. We didn't have any negative comments. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Would the applicant or representative of the applicant like to present?
He did call me yesterday and said there's a chance he might not be here.
That chance has come to pass. Okay. All right. However, he didn't ask for a continuance or anything. Okay. All right. Is there anybody here to speak in support of the application? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. None on both accounts. Do we have any further questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
I would move staff recommendations.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit at 3805 Sixth Avenue. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously, six to zero. Okay, that brings us to item 10, a conditional use permit request at 515 East Grand Avenue. Yeah, I'll present.
Item number 10 is very similar to the last item. It's been operating as a grocery store for many years with the sale of beer and wine. Not, in previous years, they were held to the 50% requirement. A few years back, the city council changed that to be 40% and then also required these conditional use permits. So with this conditional use permit, nothing would change from how they have been operating. Take a step back. This is the New Oriental Store at 515 East Grand Avenue, down here in the East Village. It's a two-story building. The grocery store is occupying the entire first floor.
Thank you.
And here's the floor plan, and then a photo of the building from East Grand Avenue.
Yep.
In the other corner. And then the consent map. Once again, all of the cards we've received are in support. I did get a call this morning from the East Village Neighborhood Association, who also was in support, did not have any concerns. So we, the staff, felt that this business demonstrated the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use permit. So we've recommended approval, subject to the same list of conditions on the previous one. And let's take a time. I won't go through all 10, but are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Oh, yes. Go ahead, Jake.
I don't have a question. I just
Comment.
need to recuse myself from this item.
Okay.
I'm under contract on the adjacent part.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Anything else to add, Bert? Okay. All right. Let's hear from the applicant or the representative of the applicant. Would you like to talk about your item? All right.
Yes, my name is Kido Philawan. I'm representing my sister, personally Philawan.
Okay.
We need a dock. Without a dock, there is no way for us to get the delivery in and out of the place. So, yes, we do need a dock.
You're saying you need a dock at the location?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, adding me to the dock. That's correct.
No, this is for a conditional use permit?
For?
To continue selling beer and wine?
Yes. Oh, yeah. That, yeah.
Yeah? Okay. All right. So you'd like us to grant that conditional use permit? That's why you're here today?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we have any, anybody want to ask the applicant any questions about the business or the location? Okay. All right. Thank you. You can go ahead and sit down.
Please.
All right. Is there anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay. Any further questions for staff? All right. Hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Thoughts?
I'm not scared.
All right. We got a motion and a second. All the comment cards said they're great neighbors. So it sounds like they're a good part of their neighborhood there with a grocery store primarily. So we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the conditional use permit, raise your hand, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously, five to zero on this one. Okay, that brings us to item 11, a conditional use permit request at 2501 Euclid Avenue.
Item number 11 again is a similar appeal for a conditional use permit. It's for the Saigon Market, which is at the corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway and where Euclid Avenue turns into Douglas Avenue. It's the old Hollywood Video Building. They've been operating for the last few years as the Saigon Market, which is a ethnic grocery store. They also have been selling beer and wine, so long as the sale of that did not exceed 40% of the business. Here are some photos. And as I'll get to shortly, they are deficient of quite a few of the bushes and trees that are required by the landscaping. So they do have some zoning violations to take care of in the short term. Here's a photo of the main entrance. This is looking east along the Douglas Avenue frontage. You can see there's, they're missing some trees and shrubs that are required by the site plan. And then this photo here shows some outdoor storage that has been taking place on the property. They are required to mitigate that immediately. Last week, the city zoning enforcement officer had sent a letter of zoning violations to them, giving them until June 1st to get the required plantings in and to take care of the outdoor storage. And then also, they've added this cooler addition onto the back of the building that needs to be reflected on their approved site plan. So they also have to amend that site plan. And here's just a copy of that letter that documents the missing landscaping and then the outdoor storage and the cooler addition. Here's the consent map. We did get two cards back with concerns. Steph took a look at this, and we felt that they did meet the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use permit. And we feel so long as they limit, keep the sale of beer, wine, and tobacco to under 40% of the sales, they shouldn't have any detrimental impacts on the neighborhood. We did, however, recommend approval with three additional comments that you didn't see on the first, on the previous two items. And that was one, that all of the missing landscaping be installed by June 1st of this year. Two, that there should be no outdoor storage of any materials or equipment on the site, and that the existing pallet shall be removed immediately. And then three, the site plan shall be revised to reflect cooler addition that's been constructed along the north side of the building. And the rest of the conditions are just the standard conditions that we recommend. Are there any questions?
Bert, this is just a continuance of what they've, in essence, already been doing for selling. They're not
Correct.
expanding their alcohol selections, per se, or anything?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Bert? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. The applicant or representative of the applicant, would you like to speak? Do you want to talk about your item?
I haven't, I don't think I can say.
Okay, okay. That's all right. Is there anybody here to speak in support of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ryan Miller, 3920 Leonard Drive, and I'm here as the president of the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association. The applicant is a, is a no-problem applicant in our neighborhood. We've had very little interaction with them. However, they fit well. We even put them in our neighborhood plan, that this is a business we want to keep healthy and everything. We're, at our last meeting, we presented that this is going on, and with board members, we discussed it. We didn't take a vote on it or anything, so I'm not here to reflect that. But nobody was, said anything in opposition. However, staff has tied to this, the violations of the site plan, the landscaping materials and everything. And so I'd like to pass this out real quick. There's, to just have one of each?
One of each.
Yep. This site goes back quite a ways. In fact, there used to be a George and Chili King out this corner. It was before my time, but I remember the Hardee's and the video store. And the video store is where the landscaping problem started. So this owner inherited those problems. The site plan that is shown on there and the materials, the locations and the types have been very difficult to maintain. And anything along the north end, where the dumpster enclosure is and where the pallets and everything else, there's no plant material that will survive there. There's a canopy of trees, and where there's not a canopy, there's roots from the adjoining property. And
I'm sorry, which?
On the north end, which would be situated this way. I can put one up there.
Okay.
All right. There you go. So along this end, materials have never survived there. They have been replanted several times. Trees in this location never make. Now, maybe it's because of a lack of watering and stuff, but this is just a terrible location for it. The odd thing is, that when this was first put in by Hollywood Video, this area is daylilies. The city of Des Moines doesn't recognize daylilies as landscaping. We recognize grass and things like that as landscaping, but not that. So it used to look really good there, and it was a row of burning bushes here, which, and we're not sure why, on the second piece of paper, if you'll notice, burning bushes are one of the things that are crossed out. And this wasn't something that the applicant did. This is something internal in the city or whatever, or it was an accident. Back when this was Hollywood Video and so many, having so many problems, then it became empty. We approached the city as a neighborhood and said, hey, let us work on a site plan with whoever the owner is to come up with something more reasonable. Put something right here at the corner. We'll help put it in. We'll help maintain it in this area, and we'll make it look great, and they can have less stuff scattered out. Because as you know, if they're mowing, stuff like this is going to get mowed over. There's some yews or some sort of evergreens in this area and stuff. It's always going to be a disaster. It's always going to look bad. So this applicant's always going to be in trouble, since this is tied to this too, or there's comments about that this could come back because they don't get their landscaping done. I, and I'm not sure if it's within your power, the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association would like to work with the applicant and city staff to come up with something reasonable. We'll partner with them. We'll provide some plant material with them, as they do, and we'll make this work out a lot better. Don't know if you can do it, but I'm good at asking for things that are kind of impossible. So with that, available for any questions.
Brian, refresh my memory. Across the street, when we approved that storage facility, I, did you
Yes.
Yeah, didn't you
Across the street, yes.
Didn't you also work with that and help with the landscaping?
Yes. They haven't worked very fast at getting their landscaping in.
But that was the suggested
But that also was. You know, the only thing that's, the negative between the old lumber company and this entity is that some semis, not owned by the applicant, will come in, they'll come into the neighborhood, which is illegal, they'll go up on the right-of-way, and they'll run it on the other side of the street and stuff like that. We just have advocated that they bring their semis in on Euclid, unload them there and stuff, but that can continue to be worked on, or it's an enforcement issue by the police or something. So Cindy, I know you want to ask something.
Okay. Brian, you're kind of on my wavelength here on some of this. And while we can't negotiate with you, per se, because you're not the applicant.
You keep saying this per se thing. I'm kind of worried about that.
Yeah. We'll have to go back to school. I would be certainly in favor of some manipulations here, but they need to meet the intent of the site plan and the intent
Exactly.
of the requirements. And sometimes we've seen applicants, yeah, instead of five of this, do three of these, or something like that.
Right.
But we may have to discuss that a little more.
Right. And I think if there's kind of a positive comment upfront here, there's somebody that I get along with back there that will go along with it. So
Right. Gotcha.
And Mr. Chairman, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would point out, part of the staff recommendation is for an amended site plan to show the cooler. It appears this site plan has already been amended once. If you see that there is strike-through of original landscaping that were replaced with something different. Again, this, generally, I don't know about this case, but generally, we allow the applicants to just, you know, design their own site and choose their own plantings. Apparently, there's already been one change. When they come through to amend the site plan for the cooler, would be an appropriate time to make another change to what, what lives, what will live and grow with this site.
Okay.
We're good with whatever.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You bet. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anyone here to, Sue Ann, did you have anything to say?
Chair members of the board, as Brian pointed out, the site plan and Roger can be amended, and staff is perfectly fine with that, as long as whatever the amendments are planted and watered. So
And just
But as Roger said, it has to be the applicant
Right.
and the owner of the property that comes forward with the site plan. But Brian certainly, that neighborhood group is great, and they can work out with, hopefully.
Who's site plan was? Was this Hollywood Video, or is it
I think it came through Hollywood Video, and they inherited it, and then somebody amended it, and some things were struck out. And so they may have better luck if they just start from scratch and get their own design going.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Sue Ann, on a big picture, if somebody develops a property in compliance with site plans, and there are plantings installed, there's a requirement over the entire lifespan of that property, those plantings or something commensurate has to remain there, right?
Yes, they have an obligation to water, maintain them, and make sure that they continue to grow. And if they die off, then we have to go back and ask them to replant them.
Okay. I think I'll remember that when I drive down our corridors once in a while. All right. Thank you. Is there anybody here to, anyone else in support? Okay, hearing none. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Any further questions for staff? Okay. Now, we do give the applicant a chance for any other final comments or rebuttal. If he doesn't want to say anything, I guess, sir, I do have a question for you. You don't necessarily have to come up if you don't want. But there are 13 conditions. The city's saying that they would approve this, but you got to meet those 13 conditions. Can you do that? Okay. All right. That was my only question of the applicant. Anybody got any questions for the applicant? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation.
I would move staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries six to zero. Okay, keep making that thing look good and keep up your good business. All right. Okay, item 12 is a variance and exception request at 1617 Oakland Avenue.
You've seen this property fairly recently in an action where there was another request for a use variance to allow a correctional placement facility. This should be considered as a separate request for a different use as boarding house. Same property, a lot of the same facts and circumstances, but the uses are looked at differently into the way the ordinance reads. The property includes, predominantly, it's the, the structure and the premises is on the property at 617 Oakland. They also own access off of College Avenue and have right through another private property to get back to parking area that's in the east rear yard of their property, so it's sort of a biper-cated site, I guess is the way to say it. A little unusual, but that's how it functions. If you're coming down Oakland Street, this is, actually, I have a better photo here. Had some older photos, but I wanted to point out, they have restored their front yard area after having to replace a utility line to the street last, last year, I should say. So you get a sense of the scale of this residential dwelling or building. Right now, the rights to it are for a single-family purpose. It has been under some continuous enforcement because of the fact it would be being used as either a correctional placement or a supervised group residence. The previous owner of the property had rights to a variance of the separation for supervised group residence. However, that had a condition on it that when the property changed ownership, it would lose that variance, and so at the point in time when the property was sold, it lost the relief that had previously been granted for it to be used as a supervised group residence. So the current appellant has really never had any rights to, other than a single-family use on this property. So the property did seek rezoning to R3, which would have given it some ability to ask for multifamily or to ask for a boarding house as a use by right through a site planning process. When that rezoning was denied, then that gave them standing to come in front of you as the board to ask for use variances. The most recent was denied for correctional placement, so they are now in front of you for a boarding house to allow up to 27 individuals to board or room within the premises amongst nine bedrooms that the property is configured for, with four parking spaces available. Those are not, those are considered non-conforming under our current standards for parking, but they are able to provide four. In order to have nine bedrooms, five spaces are required based on the requirement for lodging houses to have one space per two bedrooms. And there's a, if you look at our ordinance, there's a little, the, of the three things I just mentioned, boarding houses, rooming houses, and lodging houses, boarding house is defined in our ordinance, and you'll see that in the applicables. Lodging house is mentioned under the parking requirements, but is not defined anywhere, so it's an interpretation that lodging house is the applicable parking provision or equates to a boarding house. And then the, the site plan provision mentions both boarding houses and rooming houses, so they could probably be considered synonymous, as rooming houses really aren't defined. So, does that confuse everybody even more?
Well, maybe just a little bit.
Basically, boarding house is defined in, in the request is for boarding house, which is basically use of a facility, residential facility with common kitchen, common restroom facilities, but lodging of, boarding of rooms.
Okay.
So they would pay compensation for the use of a sleeping room.
But is a boarding house allowed in an R180
It is not.
Single-family. It is not.
It was allowed in the R3, but they were denied that rezoning, so that's why they're in front of you as a use variance.
Right, right.
And then
Yeah, we have the variance for the use, and we have the exception request for the parking, correct?
Correct.
Okay, no problems.
Yeah, by the fact that if you grant the use variance, then the use would require five parking spaces, and they don't have.
Right, right.
The other thing I want to point out is that it does require a new boarding house use to have a site plan that goes to the Plan and Zoning Commission, so. Yes?
Go ahead, Ms.
Yes.
You, you pointed out, four parking spaces are required if, if the staff recommendation to, to limit it to nine is approved, but the applicant has sought to have 27 individuals, according to the agenda?
Yes.
If, if that were approved, how many parking spaces would have been required?
The number of individuals isn't relevant to the parking requirement. It's the number of bedrooms. They're asking for 27 individuals to occupy nine bedrooms. So it's the nine bedrooms that cause the number of stalls that are required. So, from that standpoint, I know that doesn't really seem relative to the intensity of what's going on there, but that's the way the requirement is in our ordinance. I think that's something for you to take into consideration here.
Would you show the first picture, where would, where would the parking take place? Because you showed how they come through.
The front that you saw of the, of the premises, you can see the, the main structure is here.
Okay.
To get access, they, this is a church right here to the southeast. There's a, they own this property where there's a driveway that actually serves the church parking lot as well.
And is there an easement in place? I mean, what happens if
I believe they
that person moves and they say
I asked the applicant that. I believe they've provided us evidence of the right to use that property as access to their parking, and it's been happening as well, so they're
With like a permanent easement?
Yeah, there might be some prescriptive rights. I don't know. I'll let them speak that. But right here is where their parking area, they have a garage as well. Multifamily uses don't generally get credit for garages, parking spaces, so we have to take that into account as well. But there's, there's area back here. They certainly have the ability to expand their parking and stay out of the front yard setback and the side yard setback requirements for parking. So there's some, there's, they have the ability to expand their parking or develop additional parking on the site.
And is there anything in the ordinance about that the owner has to live on the property?
No, no.
And a boarding house can be
Boarding houses are basically houses, think of a single-family house where they allow people to rent a room and use the common facilities. And it does require a rental certificate, so.
But at the same time, a boarding house is not allowed in
Not in the R180.
Single-family district.
Right, right.
Right. What you're saying, if it's normally allowed in a district, no, you don't have to live there as the owner.
Right, and you don't have to. It's just like in a, if you had a single-family dwelling in an R180, you could rent that to a family that didn't
But you can rent it to a single family. You can't just have bunches of unrelated lodgers in multiple
Well, you could have four unrelated, technically.
Okay, all right.
This would, this is sort of the solution to when you have more of four and, more than four unrelated.
Okay.
It becomes a boarding house, kind of by, by default.
Sure.
I think that operationally, it's important, perhaps, that they have a resident manager or something of that nature.
Sure.
The other kind of cousin to this is the bed and breakfast, and the bed and breakfast does have provisions where the owner is supposed to be the, the, the owner operator should live on the premises.
Right.
In this case, staff reviewed this. Looking at, looking at the intensity of it, the request for 27 people to occupy this facility seemed still pretty intensive, kind of on the level of the correctional placement or supervised group residence, which it had previously had. I think there's even been some statements made by the, the owner that there was a history of this being a boarding house in, in the war era for spouses of, of soldiers at one time, so there's probably some history that it has actually served as a boarding house. But the zoning, the neighborhood had an effort to rezone or downzone this area not, not so far, not so long ago. You can see there's other area, there's other properties that were configured or had rights as kind of multifamily around the area that are still R3, that were left, that were left out of that downzoning. This was not one of those properties, so that's
Do you have any reason why on that, Eric, if
Well, I don't, other than the fact that it had some, that it was in continuous use as that supervised group, and it had the, the variance in place for the owner at the time, so nobody objected to the downzoning of the property, and so it didn't really, I don't know if you want to say it fell through the cracks, but it, there just wasn't any
If everything else is going to be R3, I don't see then why that wouldn't have been left as R3.
Yeah, and supervised group can be allowed in R1.
Right.
If they meet the separation. This one had a variance for separation, however, because there's a couple others in the neighborhood. So lots of things going on here, lots of attempts at different uses, but right now, the one you need to think about is boarding house. When staff looked at this, we looked at that intensity of 27 boarders. We thought that was pretty intensive and not much different than if you looked at it as a supervised group or a correctional placement. If you look at other uses allowed in R1, there are certainly things like family home, elder family home, that basically allow at the most up to eight residents, and with the fact that this had nine bedrooms, we felt something along that level of occupation or intensity or density of use was more appropriate, given the character of the area, given the size of the structure. There's probably some argument that a single-family is a, is a challenge for this reuse of this property. It certainly could be used for that, but a family home would be allowed as well. A boarding house with up to eight or nine occupants, staff felt was reasonable. There's nine bedrooms. Each individual would have a bedroom. That's assuming, we were assuming the ability to have a resident manager in that. So, from that standpoint, we thought that any approval of this for a use variance should be limited down in the number of people occupying it. Based on that, too, we thought a variance, we thought there was enough ability to meet the parking requirement or rearrange or reconfigure or do a site plan that showed five spaces to meet the number of bedrooms, or there was the ability to, you know, close off one of the smaller bedrooms, not use it for a bedroom purpose, and, and meet the parking as, as provided. So we didn't see that they met the test for the exception, but we felt that the boarding house, it was a, was a good use based on the scale and size of the structure. It met the character if it was limited down to that number of individuals. The economic ability to keep it maintained as a property or residential property is, seems a bit easier to do, being able to get the income from this type of use, and it wouldn't have the detrimental effects that correctional placement or a higher intensity supervised group would have, that the neighborhood expressed concerns about. So staff has basically landed on granting the variance limited to no more than eight boarders, one resident manager. We do want to make sure that any conversion complies with applicable building codes, so any, any work that requires permits needs to go through the permit and development center. We also want to make sure that they comply with our rental certificate process through our neighborhood inspection division under Chapter 60 of the city code. By the nature, by the reference of the ordinance, boarding houses in the R3 district are subject to having a site plan in front of the Plan and Zoning Commission in accordance with design guidelines for multifamily, rooming houses, boarding houses. We want it to follow that process. This is R1, but you're pulling in an R3 use, so by, we're kind of grabbing that whole requirement from R3 and bringing it to R180. We believe that should be a condition. And then, any boarding house that's granted under the decision and order, if it starts to display a pattern of use or activity that would be detrimental to the general health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding neighborhood, we want the zoning enforcement officer to have the ability to bring that back for some reconsideration. I know generally, variances carry with the land, but if some conditions change about the nature of the area, I think that there's enough there that the zoning officer could bring that back for consideration under the same criteria.
And Eric, what's the, and maybe Sue Ann can answer this, but the cards indicated that there were people living in the house now.
Yeah, and some of that has to do with, we, you know, we've got some litigation in, going on right now, so in terms of staying enforcement and that type of thing. Certain things, I know she's mandated and required, so I'll let her speak to how they're complying with any enforcement action that we're, that we have underneath.
Because the cards indicated that the neighbors were pretty concerned with what's going on.
Yeah, and I think they, they expressed that when it went up for correctional placement as well. There was definitely concerns about the activity going on. So I'll, I'll let Sue respond to that.
And Eric, just very, very briefly here, I see the neighboring landowner to the east is not in support of this, but it looks like the location in the past has used some of the parking, perhaps on the neighbor's lot, to comply with site plan requirements. Would they have to probably install paved parking or paved drives?
They'll be required to meet site plan requirements. I'm not sure, I can't really respond to that adjoining neighbor being in objection to this particular request, but I'll let the appellant respond to their rights of access across that property.
Sure. All right, good point. Thank you.
Eric, real quick, is this the third time this has come up? One of the cards says there's been two other times.
Yeah, the, the first time was actually a challenge of the zoning officer's determination. So if you look down that, kind of that history that is in the staff report, this came up for a rezoning in front of our Plan and Zoning Commission, which is not this body.
Right.
So somebody might have responded that, you know, that there was another hearing for another, in another venue, which is more of a legislative function.
Right, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Any other questions for Eric? Okay, thank you. Sue Ann, do you have something you wish to add?
Chair members of the board, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to answer questions about enforcement, or if you want me to wait until my normal place at the conclusion. It's up to you.
Well, I would
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to know, the, the short history of the, the short version of a long history on this property. It was occupied as a correctional placement facility, which was in violation of the ordinance, and we did ask her to remove those individuals, and that's sort of a long, drawn-out thing. We filed under Chapter 60, which is our housing rental code, for illegal occupancy without a rental certificate. Sort of in the middle of that, they came to this body requesting to be allowed to have the correctional placement facility. That is up on appeal. Then there was negotiations over what they could do here, so we allowed them to, we went in and did an inspection on the rental side to make sure that the occupants were safe and that the building was habitable and there weren't any safety issues. And that was in result of our civil infraction we filed under the housing side of it. Then pending that, there was an agreement that as long as they brought the occupancy use in compliance through this board, that we would deal with the rental afterwards. There's also been some concerns that she has a supervised group residence in there, or had in the middle of this, supervised group residence, so we're still trying to sort that out. A boarding house would not allow the residents to be placed there under a supervised group setting. And one of the things that I wanted in the, in the decision from this board is the right to bring it back to you, should we find that it is actually being used as a supervised group residence rather than a strict boarding house. Strict boarding house would be, people can come and go as they want. They don't have an obligation to go to AA meetings or any, any other support meetings that may be a requirement to live there. So we're, that's the balance that we're trying to strike with this occupancy. Does that make it more muddy, or?
Okay.
I mean, this is sort of an ongoing
Sue Ann, prior to the applicant's involvement in the site, was Sue Ann, prior to the applicant's involvement in the site, was there a group home there or some group use of some type?
Harbor of Hope.
Yes.
Had a conditional use from this board.
Okay.
To be.
It was a separation.
Separation variance, sorry.
Just distance.
Thank you, correct.
Okay.
Separation, because it is within a quarter mile of other like uses.
Right.
That was tied to its occupancy of the building.
Themselves, could not be carried forward.
Could not be carried forward. The order was very specific that when they vacated, it, it went away immediately. It wasn't even a six month thing. It was when they're, when they're gone.
Right.
And.
Was the reasoning at the time that we wanted, based on the rezoning, we're bringing this district down, or it wasn't that we wanted things to be congruent with the neighborhood?
I wasn't present for the hearing, so I'm not going to speak for.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
Nineteen ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
I believe it probably was. When this is done, we want this, this use to cease, otherwise the board probably wouldn't have.
Okay. Good enough for me, all right. Any other questions for Sue Ann? All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Adjustment, my name is Dan Manning with the Lilis O'Malley Law Firm, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. With me today is my partner, Bridget Kowalski, who's passing out the packet that I'd like to, to proceed through in order to have some, bring some order to what has been a, a procedurally complicated trek that my client, Kelly Wolfcoole, has followed. Kelly is present in the audience today. And I, I want to, I think there, there are some questions that have been raised by members of the, of the board that will take the time after my presentation to address as best I can. But we start with the property at 1617 Oakland, which is a, nearly a 6,000 square feet, square foot structure. And the, what we have in our packet is just a floor plan, just to give you an idea, this is a floor plan, as you can see, it says Exhibit C. It's part of another exhibit that we had filed early on in the process. But it's designed today to, to have you just get a feel, flavor for what the property, how it, how it lays out, and that there are, you know, nine bedrooms, eight bathrooms, five upstairs, three downstairs. It is a very large facility, which makes its use and its future use a complicated one, because we don't want to be in a position, my client doesn't, I think anyone, where there, there's no way to use that facility. And, but if we could back up, and I'll just start with the story as to why, and I'll just tell you why I got involved in this case. And when I, it'll, in October of, of 2013 is when I got involved. A lot had happened prior to that time. And I want to walk you through it. I know I only have 10 minutes to do it, so I'm going to try to get right at it. But it's, it's important to understand from, from, I guess, from an objective standpoint, I know she's been before you before with this property, but I don't, I think I want you to understand how it is that she was here and, and, and why things are the way they are. Let's start with the fact that Kelly purchased the property in the fall of 2012 from Harbor of Hope. Rest assured, this is the first purchase she's made of this type of property. And I'm very familiar with due diligence, but I'm not sure that, that Kelly was in the early stages of, of her involvement. She's very familiar with due diligence today. But she purchased the property in the fall of, of 2012. Now, there is a dispute legally as to, you know, whether she has legal nonconforming rights or not, but since my involvement in this case, I've tried to focus on a solution rather than just listing and arguing legal points. But she purchased the property in the fall of 2012 and operated it as a correctional placement residence, believing she had every right to do so, based upon the representations made by the folks she was purchasing the property from, from Harbor of Hope. She operated it until the, the spring of 2013 in that fashion, because what happened is there was either a crushed sewer pipe or a backup, but it forced her to evacuate the residents of the property in the spring of 2013. And in that process, brought attention to the city staff to look at and see the problem, see the issues that were going on. And there, it was their, certainly their interpretation that, that a correctional placement residence was, was not authorized, based upon the fact that Harbor of Hope had left the facility. But if, in, in the packet that we've submitted to you, I would, I would say, if you look at, things move very quickly here. If you look at Exhibit Two, a letter from Sue Ann informing Kelly Wolfcoole of the problem. You look at Exhibit Three, that's a letter from Kelly back recognizing, hey, wait a minute, we have an issue and a problem here. Then there was a, Exhibit Number Four is a, okay, here's what you do. If you have a problem, you want to continue to utilize that property in that fashion, then you need to set a pre-application meeting to rezone that property from R160 to R3, which Kelly set out to do. At the same time, as Sue Ann has pointed out, they initiated, so there are really two steps here. We've got the rezoning that we're, that Kelly's working on, and then there's a enforcement side of this, which was initiated by, by the city. Now, if you take a look at our Exhibit Five, this is what brought, got my attention, is Kelly had retained an attorney, and that attorney had tried to address this concern. If you look at, that's Exhibit Five, and look at the timing here. He files his answer on May 2 of 2013, and then he's suspended to practice law on May 3 of 2013. Okay? And so, and that same, and the notice of the, of the hearing date comes on May 3 of 2013, sent to, to the attorney, and also sent to Kelly. Then there's a conversation, I'll, don't worry, I'll try to get a continuance beyond my suspension date. That doesn't happen, there's a, a default judgment entered. Now, at the same time that that's going forward, I, I put that out there in that Kelly then is trying to rezone the property, go to the plan and zoning commission, representing herself, because she can't afford to retain another attorney. Okay? Now, at all times, every step of this process, the staff was very professional and provided her with great advice as to what to do and how to do it. But what I'm submitting to you is, there was a lot of stumbling and fumbling on the, our part of the applicant moving through this process. Okay? At the, and you can see that Exhibit Nine, for example, that's an email from Eric Lundie, once again, giving her some guidance as to what she needed to do. And that was to come back to this board and ask, because she was zoned properly, to ask for the variance, or the, the distance variance, is that what it's called? The distance variance. So, that's when I got involved in the case. When I saw the history, I, my, from my perception of this, is that there ought to be a way with a 6,000 square foot building to figure out a way. And through a lot of great interaction with the staff, Sue Ann Donovan, we have figured, or tried to figure out a way to make this work. By the way, and once again, my own perhaps mistake is, we submitted our application recognizing that we could house, based on the square footage and so forth, 26 residents, 26, is it 26? Or it's seven? Twenty-six residents. But we stand here today in support of the recommendation being made by the staff.
Okay.
Okay? That we make it nine individuals. Kelly has to figure out a way to, to keep this, to have enough cash flow to maintain her premises and her property and so forth. She, that's why we are supportive of all of the conditions that have been laid out. We, I certainly recognize why those conditions are in place, and I think I've been able to adequately explain to my client, to Kelly, as to why they're in place and they need to be followed, and that any permit that's granted can easily be revoked if, if any of those standards are not, are not met. We, we did, as Sue Ann mentioned, there was an inspection, I've marked that on Exhibit 11, just to be able to show, and I know that it was recently re-inspected. And what Kelly has, has put a significant amount of money into this facility, it was not in great shape when she acquired it. And she's had to, to repair and, and renovate the bathrooms, the kitchen, and other aspects of the property, repaint it, put new porches on. And we've offered to have the, and I know obviously that the inspectors have been through the property, but other neighbors to take a look through the inside of the property, and we're always welcome to do that. And we've made that same offer to Sue Ann, but I know that she has her own, you know, that's what the inspectors are there for to do, and that's what they've done in this case. So, then we submitted our application, I've marked that as Exhibit 12. If you look at Exhibit 13 of the packet that I've provided to you, and I've marked in a big spot with a circle around it, you can see that directly to the north, directly to the east, and directly to the west, the property is zoned R3. Now, we know we're not zoned R3. If, had I been representing Kelly, Kelly didn't own the property, as I understand it, when it was down zoned. But we wouldn't have wanted that to happen, because in terms of the question of whether it's the character of the neighborhood, we certainly know, we've had, we've met with representatives of the neighborhood, had a very good discussion with them. We recognize and understand what they want in their neighborhood, and, and we, I certainly respect that. They live there, and we need to be respectful of that. That's what we're trying to be here. We believe that, and then I'll have, I have something here, you know, one of the conversations, one of the issues was, we had a Realtor from Iowa Realty come and take a look at the property, and they wouldn't even agree to list the property as a single family residence. You know, because based on its size, based on its layout, it just wouldn't, it would take a tremendous amount to try to get, find the right person to purchase that property as a single family residence. So, we, we have photos in the packet of the property with some of the interior photos, some exterior photos of the property. And we, I don't know if this shows it better, but it probably basically shows the same thing. But access is off College, to, to answer the earlier question, there is no parking in the front of the property. As you can see, it, it abuts Oakland, and there's no parking other than street parking. Then, there is parking through, from College Avenue, and then up through, literally three different, you pass through three different properties to get access to this property. Now, that, that's all, as I understand it, based upon how it's been forever, based on prescriptive easements. There's additional properties that gain access from this, this access beyond this property. As I understand it, there are two other properties that gain access to their property from the rear through that access off of College Avenue. So, you know, you know, this is where, getting back to the, the issue of the, you know, the correctional placement residence is what we, she started with, and what she asked to rezone the property, so she could rezone the property. Then the conversation was, as a supervised group residence, because you have the proper zoning, but you don't have the right separation, the conversation, and that's what's still in litigation. And what we've done since I've been involved is to file the petition and then put on hold with the city legal department, any obligation on their part to respond to the petition that I filed while we try to work this issue out. And that's what we're trying to do. That's what we believe to be the best solution to this situation that we find ourselves in. Now, I'm available or happy to answer any questions that you have, but.
We'd like to do that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. You've read the staff recommendations, what's your feeling on that?
I accept them. And, and we, we would ask that you move the staff recommendation. We, we accept those terms. Now, there's one conversation, one question about nine versus eight. If you have eight, you don't need the exception for the parking. If you have nine, you do. And from our perspective, we're, we're willing to accept the eight resident limitation, rather than address the, the issue of the exception. And I think, at least in part, our, the conversation is, is the, the means of access to that property. I'd point out that, that the residents of this, of this property don't tend to have cars. You know, the, the four residents, now that's with the number of residents we have now, which is, I understand it is 19, we're willing to accept the recommendation of the staff, provided that, well, there really aren't any provisos. It's, it's what the staff is recommending we're supportive of. And, and I, I think we'd go with eight residents and not have to deal with the exception to the parking requirements.
Dan, if, if you accept staff recommendation and not go for the exception, do the eight spaces then, you don't have kind of a tentative site plan here or anything, but, but how do you think you would be able to legally provide for the required number of parking spaces on the property and pave that and show all that?
Well, we have, excuse me.
Sure.
We have four.
Okay.
Now, now, it's a rock, it's a rock access.
Okay.
It's all the way through there. I think about halfway up, I think the church has paved their, their access to the edge of their property line.
Right.
But that, that church really only takes up about half of, of this, of this larger lot. And so, it's about, from about halfway up, it's rock all the way. I think we, from what I hear, the only, we have, here's what I know we have to do. We have to develop that site plan. We have to present it to the P and Z. And we, as I understand it, we have to pave those four spaces.
Right.
And, and I don't know that we can, we certainly can't commit today that we would pave property that we don't own, but we do have access rights across that property. I don't see it as a significant issue. I think we would pave our four spaces. We'd have to, as I understand the staff recommendation.
Okay. Do you have those access rights by some kind of a formal easement on the property?
We do not.
Abstract? How does that work legally then?
Well, if you have a prescript, well, let me, let me back up and say, I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
But I believe we've been operating under the assumption, it's a prescriptive easement that's been there since the building was, you know, I don't want to say it's been there, I can't attest to, but it's been there a very long time.
Okay. But somehow the law provides for these prescriptive easements by you demonstrating it's been that way since, since before whatever time?
That, that is correct. It's a 10-year period.
Okay.
But we, and so we know that it's been, you know, far in excess of that 10-year period. It's never, it's never been an issue that I'm aware of with, that's ever been raised. But now, she's only owned the property since the fall of, of 2012.
Okay.
But it's never been an issue, no one's blocked that access, no one said you don't have the right of access or anything like that.
Okay. And Dan, just, you, you gave a nice history here, but kind of where that jump off point was, when Kelly bought it from Harbor of Hope, she didn't continue on as a legal entity herself as Harbor of Hope. She was then her own person?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And it, I'm, I'm sorry, the entity that is, was one-way recovery was the name of it.
Okay.
It's been made very clear to us that she cannot, as a, if she operates as a boarding house, she cannot operate, cannot operate as a, as either any sort of correctional placement facility or supervised group residence.
Right.
She, no, no, there'd be no services provided. She will simply provide a room and a place for them to eat their meals, and that will not go forward. And that's been abundantly clear.
Taken her forward, yeah. And, and I know this is before your legal representation, but when she found out that that use wasn't to be continued, that it was limited to Harbor of Hope only, did she take any legal recourse against the seller of the property for failure represented accurately or anything like that?
No.
She did not?
No. That may be something that still has to happen. One of the things from my legal advice, for what it's worth anyway, is that, is that we need to, we need to go through this process to verify whether we have any, any, any ability to make an argument that we've been damaged.
Okay.
I also, you know, I don't, and we have not pursued it any further than that. It's still an option. Our representation's been short enough that we, we've been focused enough on this issue that we have not exhausted all of our analysis.
So, you're looking to move forward rather than?
That's right.
Backward?
That's right.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Dan? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dan. We'll check back with you in a few minutes. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant? Just please state your name and address for the record.
Board, Mr. Chairman, Mike Hildbrand, 410 Franklin Avenue. I'm a resident of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association, I'm a little over two blocks away from this facility, and I was, I have been with this as long as many people, from the beginning, I think it was October of 2012 is when my first engagement with Kelly started. I'm on the board of directors of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association, and I've come before you before on this. Mr. Manning, Mr. Lundey, explain the history in great detail, so I don't think I need to go over that anymore.
We appreciate that.
One thing, one thing I want to add here that wasn't mentioned, whenever we start talking about paving lots and changing parking, this property is in the local historic district, so that would play in there, that, and there has been, I believe, we'd have to check with Mr. Van Essen, there was violations with some of the sidewalk replacement and stair replacement, that's part of that 18 months of history of this ongoing saga. And, and I think that's what I want to say, I don't want to go over the history, but, the general consensus of the association and neighbors, it's been an ongoing track record of ask for forgiveness than permission, from our perspective, we're not in possession of letters and how that whole thing went. Most of the time, it appeared through all of this, and Sue Ann's been great with keeping us informed, there was a lot of action taken, and then saying, "I didn't know," or, "I, you know, I didn't check into it," and asking for forgiveness, but not necessarily taking the right steps, vacating the property, you know, showing good faith that, "Oh, we screwed up, and we want to make this right, and then we'll go forward." So, I mean, that's our, that's been our, our history with this whole thing, of we have to keep an eye on things happening there, and, and we're not convinced that's going to change. When, case in point, there's a one-way recovery website that's still up, it talks about their 7,000-square-foot living space boarding house, and I can pass these around. Another thing that also is very important, Kelly has a passion for recovery, and I think it's going to be hard for her not to continue that passion, that's just my opinion. I think that would be another thing, is how, how is the city, I'm sure the neighborhood will be partially responsible, continually monitoring this, making sure that there are only eight people living there, that there is no recovery going on, according to the It's just, it's, it's a general theme, that we just, we're not sure that it's going to be able to be enforceable, how's that going to happen? You know, people have donated to this, to the one-way recovery, I'm assuming it's a nonprofit, I don't know how she's going to work that out, you know, is she going to dissolve that, does she have to give back the granite countertops and beds? That's a concern, and that's something she and her legal staff will have to work out. But I guess the final thing on that is, if the staff recommendation is approved of eight beds, how is that going to be enforced? What if, I mean, and I, this would be devils in details, but are we going to, you know, whenever somebody gets into a relationship and their partner moves in, now we're up, do we vacate another room? I mean, how's that enforceable? I, I can't say that the Riverbend Neighborhood Association agrees with the eight staff recommendation. We haven't, I just saw that recommendation here, as I got here. When I met with, or when we met with Mr. Manning and Kelly, there was talk of compromise, that Kelly's compromised from the correctional facility down to the now boarding house with 27 beds. And we had a discussion on that, that's, that didn't feel like a compromise to us, you know, we're starting at single-family, and this is up at 27 beds. Staff recommendation gets it closer, I can't say we agree to it, but, but it's a heck, heck of a lot closer to single-family than 27 is. The final thing I'll say is the history, we talked that this has been a recovery, or a treatment facility for 30 years, and there's R3 all the way around it, and so on and so forth. I don't think we want to look at the, we might need to look at the history, we're looking forward, what is this neighborhood going to be? And I think we all in this room can say, this neighborhood has improved over the past few years, we continue to move forward and improve. We're not losing our roots, but we're learning from our roots, the high-density R3 zoning is changing, single-family's there, it's a nicer neighborhood, you go into it, it's a good place to live, we have a lot more families walking down the sidewalks. It's great about the history, but we're looking forward, and just because something was the way it was, doesn't mean we should keep it the way it is, or continue doing that. We've, we've passed ordinances to have the separation, we've rezoned, we're working towards a future of what looks like works and is proven to work, and I think anything less than moving away from that is taking the neighborhood in a direction that we've proven doesn't work.
Questions for Mike? Yes, Brooke?
Sue, with the, have you seen the staff recommendations?
Yes, I have.
And do you agree, disagree?
Personally?
Well, however you want to-
I'm not representing the board, because we haven't discussed the staff recommendation.
Okay.
I just saw it today.
Okay.
Mike, just, just one comment, and the staff is generally in support of kind of a downsized version of what may have been going on there, but the staff also says that they don't believe, or they, they feel there would be challenges to converting the home strictly for single-family use. I mean, just, just off the cuff, let's, let's say there were three apartments in there, would you be comfortable with that?
If I owned the property, and it was six or 7,000 square foot, I believe I would want to triplex it, or quadplex max. Can't say that this body would support that, or P&amp;Z, or the Neighborhood Association, that's what I would do with it personally.
Which is what we would call multi-family, so even though it was zoned away from R3 and down to R1, single-family, a variance for a multi-family to you would be better than, say, a boarding house, or a group home, or something like that?
Closer to single-family.
It's closer to single-family.
Yeah, I'm in a 4,500-square-foot house that used to be aplex.
I'm envious, yeah.
So, yeah, I can, I can totally understand a realtor walking in there with a tent chopped up into 10 bedrooms, a, I could see where it'd be difficult to market. I know somebody over in the Sherman Hill area that has a 6,000-square-foot home that's beautiful. It can be done, it's a limited market.
Okay, got you. Any other questions for Mike?
I don't know if we need the website papers.
Since you referenced that, you'll need to leave a copy of that with staff.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate you coming in today. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none, any further questions for staff? Hearing none. Rebuttal by the applicant. You've got three minutes, Mr. Manning.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dan Manning, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. I appreciate everything that Mike talked about, we had, I thought, a very productive meeting, I knew that we, we at least had a very positive conversation, and while we respectfully disagree with each other, I thought, I thought it was helpful, that it was helpful for my client to, to, to listen to them, and them to listen to us, and what we're trying to do, and that we have the best interest of that neighborhood in mind. As I mentioned, the R3 is, surrounds this property, not on the, not, not on the south, but, but north, east, and west. And, you know, the issue of webpages, and it's, it's down, it's been taken down. We're clear about what the standards are. Sue Ann has been absolutely clear, the, the staff report is written in such a fashion, it's absolutely clear. So, we believe that this is the best use, we know it's not, not a perfect situation, but it's, it's one that we think works best for everyone and for the neighbors.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, unless there are any other questions, we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. What do you folks think, let's talk about this, that's why we're here.
Is there going to be, is there going to be eight boarders and one onsite manager? I keep hearing eight.
Eric, go ahead and step up, since that's your staff recommendation.
I haven't heard nine, and that's nine, eight, nine.
Yeah, that's, the staff recommendation provides for that, yes.
Okay.
And is, I guess is-
And if they want to have that manager, they'll probably have to do a site plan that shows another parking space. Or that, if they want to limit their bedrooms, you know, to the eight total, then-
For everybody, yeah.
They could leave the number of, you know, if they can do a site plan with four spaces, then they'll be okay under the parking provision. So, it sounds like they're not, they're not fighting the denial of the exception for the parking, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure I heard that right.
And Eric, while, while you're up here, a fundamental question that I have is, to make the site plan work, I don't see a site plan, and there was some discussion about, you know, kind of rights by, by time and everything, we've got three to four parcels that they may access to get to the property, do you allow for that in site plan review, or what evidence do you need that they have legal access rights to other parcels?
That's a good question, I mean, certainly we'll want to ensure that they have that continuous right of access, so at the time they're putting together their site plan, I think they should attempt to get, you know, formal rights of access.
Because I, I feel it's a little bit chicken and the egg, if we were to approve this, yeah, this is great, well then they can't really do it anyway, versus maybe the applicant coming with, "Hey, we can legally do this, here's a site plan, this will work," I would probably feel a little bit better about the proposal if I knew that.
What I hear Mr. Manning saying is, there's been no challenge to their right of access, and that, you know, certainly they, they probably have an argument if there is a challenge to that.
Okay.
I don't know, we need, I don't know if we can, we're prepared to be able to refute that, or, or agree with it, either way, right now as we sit here.
Okay.
One of the several things that bothers me about this is when I see them driving through somebody's backyard to get to the property, and Riverbend has worked real hard, as have all neighborhoods have, to, to have nice, you know, we want nice inviting neighborhoods, and we're really letting people drive through, like, the backyards, it did, from the picture that I saw, it didn't look like there was any kind of paving, it just kind of looked like dirt, but-
And, and, you know, I can't, again, historically, if that's been the, sort of, a relocated alley on private property, or, you know, we have lots of these situations-
Still doesn't make it nice.
Yeah, in historic neighborhoods, so it's not unusual, what we try to do through the site planning process is come to the best solution that meets the standards of the site plan ordinance, and, and, you know, it is, it isn't always brand-new paved alley, paved driveway situation, but we try to improve on the existing condition, so I appreciate your observation on the, the existing situation, which isn't ideal, I mean, if this was built new as a subdivision, we would, you know, have something completely different, but, but yeah, I, I think through the site plan, the P&amp;Z can try to address those physical development standards.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Do they, do they need a site plan if they only have one of those avenues?
Well, we're asking it as a condition under this action, but I think we could make the argument that the fact that supervised group, or boarding houses in R3 require a site plan under those design guidelines-
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
-by transference.
Right.
And since R1 is even more- You're approving an R1, you're approving an R3 use as a use variance.
So since we're getting more restrictive, it's in an R1 district, we want to carry those things forward.
And in the use language, it refers to the site plan requirements, so.
Right, okay. Okay, we are in board deliberation, and there was a question for Eric, so, back to thoughts. What do you people want to do here?
I personally still cannot support this, I believe that it's a single-family home, I realize that it's a large home, but there are lots of large homes in this city. You know, I think she bought it, as I recall from last time, she bought it at a, you know, a rock-bottom price, not that that matters, but I think that you should be able to recoup some of your money, it would still make a nice bed and breakfast, you know, if somebody doesn't want to, to have it as single-family, but I think there are people that would be delighted to have, have a big home in that neighborhood, it's, it's, it's very historical, it's in a historical neighborhood, we have to meet those guidelines, when I look through the booklet that was given, it bothers me that we've got people in there and we didn't have smoke detectors, from, from what I'm reading, maybe I, I didn't read it correctly, but I saw in there where, where there needed to be smoke detectors, so I, I just can't support it at this time, I'm sorry.
Other thoughts?
I agree with mine, I too have some issues, especially with the whole issue of accessing the property without knowing firmly if there's an actual easement, or if it's just the way it's been for numerous years. If that was a little clearer, it would be more helpful.
And, and I have to ask the question, would you want it in your neighborhood? You know, if, would you want your next-door neighbors to have a boarding house in your neighborhood? And I, you know, there just doesn't seem to be enough control, it's not like somebody's onsite that lives there, that has a vested interest in the property, and I, I just, I just don't think our neighbor, I don't think it's, I don't think it's for the betterment of our neighborhoods.
I think I would offer a counterpoint, 6,000 square feet, was zoned R3, broke it into three, you could easily have eight occupants. And I think to keep the scale in mind, and the adjacent zoning is important in this, to me, it seems like the existing condition is far outside of what should be there, but I, I think the staff recommendations are, A, a step closer, and B, reasonably close to what's going on adjacent.
Okay. Okay.
I would move staff recommendations.
Okay, we've got a motion, and we've got a second, some good comments there. Okay, let's go ahead and vote, we've got a motion to approve the requested use variance, and there's the requested exception relief of one off-street parking space that's still in there then, and we've got a second. So all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's kind of a tough one, easy to see both sides, but looks like you have a chance to give it a try, you've got to do it right. So, you need to work with staff on that, you'll need a good site plan and move forward. Okay, I would, I need to take a five-minute break, let's put it that way, as your chair, I need a five-minute break here, we'll, we'll round to our advantage, let's start at 3:15 for our last two items. Jake, do you need to go?
I have to leave at 3:25, so I just will leave, unless you think the other one's going to be fast.
You might, yeah, okay, we appreciate your time today, thank you.
What, this?
We previously delivered copies to the, to the staff. You have those?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are thirty-four different people.
Staff's U I P.
Well, that's what. The, uh, we don't have a lot to, to add to the, uh, staff recommendation, except we will waive, uh, the requested variance because, um, they have measured the garage and they think the garage is fifteen hundred and sixty-four feet and we can get along with the half of that.
Okay.
And, uh, otherwise, uh, we accept, uh, all of the, uh, this, the, uh, conditions on the staff recommendation. I did want you to know, though, that, um, Bob has checked with his neighbors and, uh, both of his neighbors have, uh, agreed to a no-build easement, uh, around the garage. And, uh, Bob never works till nine-thirty at night. He, he wraps it up at four-thirty and the cars are out there by five-thirty.
That's when he can work on your own stuff. Just a brief question or two. The staff had said, oh, this has been going on for thirty-plus years. Now, Bob, have you lived there all that time and have you been running it or how long?
I've lived there for thirty-seven years.
Okay, okay.
And don't know why I'm moving Zalato or Pine Box.
Right, okay. So, so, so this has basically been your operation for a long period of time and apparently everybody's been happy about that.
Yeah, Bob, uh, opened in nineteen eighty-four and got a sales tax permit at that time.
Good job.
And, uh,
And I have insurance on the business, separate policy.
Excellent, glad to hear that. All right, Mr. Clark, anything you or your client have to add?
Uh, if you have any questions.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The one is here.
Okay. All right, hearing done, we'll check back with you in a minute here.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Any, uh, further questions of staff? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
I would move staff recommendations with one footnote about Mr. Bob's choice of counsel.
And tongue-in-cheek, you know. Mr. Clark's great counsel, which he has provided and his great service he's provided this board and our city when he used to live here, so thank you, Tom. Okay, so we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Keep up the good work there. All right, and Tom, always glad to see you. Okay, that brings us to our last item, item number fifteen, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I do want to point out, the appeal was revised from the original mailing of the, um, agenda and we consulted with legal counsel on how to make that adjustment on our agenda and staff report and I think we're within our, uh, abilities to make that adjustment.
Do that?
So, uh, I do want to, did want to point that out.
Sure.
The appeal is for a variance of twen- and a hundred percent variance for the off-street, I'm sorry, parking from the north property line. And I didn't mean parking, I meant, uh, building setback from the north, uh, front property line adjoining east Martin Luther King Junior Parkway. Some people know that as the southeast connector project. This is an area that's already been through that process. A little bit of the circumstances behind this request.
There we go.
I believe the, uh, city has vacated this as parkland. It was formerly Allen Park. And they are looking to locate a business out of the western downtown area or assist in the location, I should say, and providing that opportunity to relocate with a new facility at this location. Based on the size of the site and so forth and, uh, the surrounding development, the thought was that this would be built up to the property line on the north, similar to kind of our NPC or Zero Lot Line development. So when we look at the site plan, the public building would set here, um, it would be, you know, right up to the property line, however, because of the Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, uh, clear zone or whatever you want to call the, the Parkway area, it's substantially set back from the actual travel portion of, of the street, so, um, but it is generally in line with the other structures along that area. So from a character perspective, it does fit within that context. Give you a couple photos here. That's looking back to the north, or, I'm sorry, that's looking south, or west of downtown. Almost looks like a reverse picture. And then you can see the improvements here, looking towards the site from the northeast. So this is, the building would rest in this area. Um, there is a cou- couple of objections that have been received. I think there's some, still some residual, uh, effect of the park decision of, to remove Allen Park.
Right.
Just so you know, the city rededicated an area nearby to, to replace that function in the same neighborhood, so. Closer to the levee, a little bit west and, just a little bit west of here, just right along the levee, um, south of Scott Avenue, so. If you know the area by Earl's.
Yeah.
Just south of there, there's a lot of property that they dedicated, so. Community gardening and so forth would be able to resume there. Staff is in support of this request in, uh, the Zero Lot Line development. We did want to make sure that any site plan goes through the process and is in conformance with, um, Downtown Overlay District Design Guidelines and that all buildings are in accordance with city codes.
Questions for Eric?
I, I have a,
Yes.
I guess a question and a comment. I'm, I mean, this is city land and they're, uh, need to move his, uh, business because of other situations, but the city sensed it's city land and now they want us to not do a hundred percent variance when if it was just somebody that wanted to build here, they would have gone, we wouldn't have done it and we would have heard all about it. Uh, 'cause we've had other situations where there's been that bigger green space, uh, that it was not owned by the, uh, by the applicant, it was city ground and we, they still wanted the applicant to tear up five feet of concrete and put in more grass. I'm sorry, I don't think this is right. If the city wants to set an example, uh, this isn't the way to do it. I'm not going to support it.
Eric, a couple of questions related to that and I understand what you're saying is we got a wide right-of-way there, we do have some green space, so they're going to build up to the property line. I think we had a situation on Maury, about East Fifteenth and Maury, East Fifteenth Court.
A little bit east of East Fourteenth.
Yeah, where we gave a guy, there was a wide green space of the right-of-way, so we let him keep the cars.
With the car lot there.
Right, so we granted him some variance for that. I, I understand what, what, what Brooke's concern is. Where I see an issue here, and I hope that this can be discussed, is if we build toward that north end, while it still appears there's a setback because of the width of the right-of-way, that landscaping and all that brick bollard work the city did, there's probably a hundred thousand dollars' worth of improvements just on that corner there. What facade would this look like for materials and design to help?
And, and that's why we referenced the Downtown Overlay, 'cause it certainly speaks to the types of materials and...
I mean, are, are we talking like, um, stone masonry appearance, uh, kind of brown?
They provide elevation that has, you know, there's definitely some significant
Okay.
amount of, uh, what I would call masonry kind of block, uh, material and, and all that the applicants, the,
Sure, yeah.
The beneficiary, the city's really the applicant here, but the beneficiary of this, this relief will go to, uh, the Scotty's Body Shop, which the designer is here and can probably speak to some of those things.
All right.
I just do, in...
I was just curious, you, you know, if, if you thought of that, if you guys took that into account as well, since you're supporting this.
Yes, and I would say in response to Brooke's concern, and I appreciate his concern, I think regardless of who is developing here and this being city-owned property, I think we would be in favor of, uh, the building resting at this place because what we're really trying to do is not put a parking lot towards, towards the Parkway, okay? We'd rather see the building framing the Parkway from a, from a design, an urban design consideration and,
Sure.
you know, not make the parking visible to the, the motoring public, I guess is the way to put it. And so whether it was the fact that Scotty's was being, uh, moved at, or, you know, another developer was moving Scotty's out of downtown, um...
Well, why, if with the, if you have landscape ordinances, what's the, what's the difference if you're looking at, wouldn't you rather look at the landscape versus the back of a building?
Well, we could have had landscaping, Brooke, but, uh, you know, let's, let's use the scenario of putting the building in the center of the property.
Yeah.
And putting landscape there, then we're not maximizing the ability to develop on this property. I think they, from the standpoint of what this development needed, a certain amount of parking to go along with the size of building that they were proposing, so, it, it's going to meet the twenty percent that we typically apply to site plans for this, you know, the entire perimeter. The drainage really works going to the south, so that's where you're seeing the detention. This is pretty, uh, representative of what's going to go forward with the site plan. It's pretty detailed, so that's good. But again, I think we're trying to frame the street and you'll probably see maybe in the future rezonings that would encourage that more. Right now, the timing probably didn't allow for us to go through a rezoning to get to that point, but...
But it, it's still, how do you speak to the fact that in the past, we have come, run into this problem with significant city-owned land in green and we still have forced, um, applicants to, to do more, including tearing up concrete and stuff? I don't understand why the city can do this and no one else can.
Of each individual area, Brooke. I think in some areas, we would want that perimeter, you know? Where we know the character is highway and the parking is going to the street, we want to have that separation. So, again, I'm just going to have to make the argument that that's on an individualized basis.
And Eric, this might, and I don't mean to interrupt either one of you, but this might be difficult for us to see on the site plan, but there will still be green space between the sidewalk and the street itself, correct?
Yeah.
On the east and south side.
Yes, yes, you're still going to have a setback from the parking, like, right in this area?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll have their...
And we're still, and then even, uh, okay, so, so between the sidewalk and the curb, we've got green space, but between the sidewalk and their parking, we're still going to have some green space, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just that this is all colored in white because it's the site plan.
It's hard to see, yeah.
It's not all under concrete.
So, yeah.
So if you can kind, can you kind of illustrate or maybe even shade in?
The building's actually going to set forward of the parking that area to the east.
So that whole south area where the detention basin is and the existing shed, that's all going to be green space?
Yes.
The sign area will be green space and then all along the east side, they will have green space.
So I, I don't, I don't want you to, like, and I, you know, I understand Brooke feels like there's a double standard here, but I don't, I don't think that's the way that staff approached this. I think we looked at it from the design,
Sure, sure.
How it fit on this corridor.
I, I think we all certainly want to review it closely.
Want to express that on behalf of, and we had our, the urban designer look at this and give us the best recommendation.
Okay.
I think this has been in front of the Urban Design Review Board.
So if...
No, Parks Board, I'm sorry, or something.
So if we have other applicants that are, are just private, come in and want to have a zero lot line on Martin Luther King in this area, we, it shouldn't be an issue.
You might see that, you might see that again. One thing I would say on that is we, there might be concern when you start to get some height to that, if you start getting a three or four-story structure that close, that would be a little different than, than this type of scale, which is, you know, a tall one-story.
We're going to have to send that guy out of the room. Just kidding. Eric, there, there were a couple of comment cards that said, well, this isn't consistent with what the East Village should look like. And I know as a neighborhood, the East Village is a very large, recognized neighborhood area, but with the city's overall plan, this is zoned M1 and there's still an intent to have light industrial uses south of, and to the southeast portion of the East Village neighborhood.
This falls kind of at the periphery of the, what's called the Market, East Village, Market area, study area.
Sure.
So there's some of that transitional use going on.
Right.
There hasn't been an initiative to rezonate away from the M1 at this point.
Okay, right, all right. So, so it is congruent or commensurate or whatever equal word I, I can use with other development that could occur down there?
Just to give you another example, for, there was a recent rezoning just north and east of here to allow for a warehouse proposal just on the north side of the corridor for an expansion there.
Okay, right.
So there's, you know, the council has indicated some acknowledgement that there's still a, some,
Right.
industrial, light industrial type usage that's reasonable for this area.
And where is our Mad House Brewing at or going to be that was, that we recently approved?
Is it off the map?
In this building right here.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
So that, all of a sudden, the separation from park just went away?
Right, right, okay. Yeah, they got you. I, I find it anecdotal funny and nifty that you're leaving that little shed building there that used to be the park, uh, service building. I think that's pretty cool. If, if anybody remembers Allen Park well enough. Okay, and any other questions?
I have a question for Eric. Sorry. Some of the comment cards are from citizens and they're saying they're really upset that this land was donated by someone from the, for a park.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let...
And, and maybe I missed your introduction because I was reading the cards, but what, what is that about?
This was, this went through a process to, to, uh, essentially what, like, we vacate right-of-way, we vacate parkland. And so it went through a pro- public process in order to take that out of the city's inventory of parkland. And in, in response to that, there was a lot of concern. And one of the ways the city council responded to that was rededicate, uh, comparable amount of parkland in a nearby area so that the neighborhood wasn't underserved, so.
And will it still be called Allen Park?
I think that they were going to designate that as Allen Park as well.
As in the new planting area or what, as?
Yeah, it's actually like a triangular shape.
Yeah.
And again, I don't have the, we're not zoomed out far enough to show you, but it's fairly close to this.
But is there, is there documentation that upon this being, um, not a park because it was donated, it doesn't revert back to the family, does it?
I don't know, I don't know the history of the...
Do you have something to add, Roger?
Well, have we checked that?
Yes, the city has owned this for such a ti- long time that even if back when it was occurred, uh, any restrictions or limitations that would have been effective on that, uh, would have expired, uh, after twenty-one years. In the absence of filing a claim, no claims to extend it were filed. And, so, I mean, this, it is, it was dedicated as a park, I don't, I don't know if there was a right to revert it, but even worst case, if there had been, uh, that would no longer be applicable at, at this time. And the...
Why wouldn't it be applicable?
After, a, a restriction on a deed of that nature expires after twenty-one years unless a claim to renew it is filed within that twenty-one years and then it extends for another twenty-one from that, that period of time.
Would that be by the donor or any citizen that wants to do it?
Uh, someone who, who is in a position to benefit from it and if it's a parkland...
So, under, under that thinking, it's a little off-track, but Wave on Golf Course is, uh, I know, fi- same deal and it, it said in the original covenant when it was donated, it would revert back to the family if the city did anything but have a park. So you're saying after twenty-one years, if the family doesn't refile, then that goes away?
In the absence of any, you know, separate contract, yes.
So is there a separate contract on this?
I'm not familiar with what happened at the time. What I do know is the abstracts has, have been reviewed by other attorneys and determined that there's not a, not a, um, any encumbrance on the title.
I just don't want the city to get sued if we do this and then all of a sudden the family shows up and says, you, you defaulted on the contract.
The abstract for the property has been reviewed and it's been determined that there's no ongoing claims of that nature. I think the board has to operate on the action taken by council that this has been vacated from parkland.
Effectively.
And that this is,
Legally, okay.
To be developed under the way that the property is zoned, so.
From, go, go ahead, Roger.
At the, at the last council meeting, the city council took action to vacate a number of rights away in the vicinity of, of, I think, Southeast Fifth and Maury, uh, for the dedication of the replacement park, um, which is, appears to be, from, from those drawings that I reviewed, substantially larger than this, uh, in area. And at the, uh, city council meeting anyway, um, it, it, what was presented at the council meeting, uh, there did not appear to be any opposition at, at that stage. I did not attend the park board meeting, uh, where that happened.
There's, there's certainly some good points here, but I think from a positive perspective, when we look at what was called Allen Park, for the last, I don't know, what, five, six years, there's been the gardens there. Prior to that, Allen Park was pretty much just something that staff had to come out and mow. There was one swing set there, there was a wading pool that I don't believe was ever filled, there was never anyone in that park. I drove by that two to four times a day. It wasn't a park that was even being used effectively, I didn't see it providing any benefit, but four blocks east of here, we have Cohen Park, which I think was a neighborhood grocer back in the day down in the southeast bottoms area. And there's still a water fountain there and the city recently invested tens of thousands of dollars to restore this public water fountain. Very few people know where it's at, but it's on Scott Avenue, five blocks, four, five blocks east of here. And Craberro Park, six blocks to southeast, millions of dollars of improvements. That is an awesome park, there's a frisbee, frisbee golf thing there, they've got a now big splash pad, that shelter is always reserved, it's always used. I think if anything, Allen Park needed something else to be done with it.
Well, but what you're saying is the city didn't keep up his park?
Not necessarily didn't keep it up.
How do we know they're going to keep up the park that came across the street?
They kept the park up for what it was, but what it was, was a very small chunk of land.
But that really doesn't matter. It was city park and if they didn't keep it up, that's city responsibility, which they
The city kept the park up.
So how do we know they're going to keep up this park?
The, the city kept up Allen Park. We're, we're going a little further than what my intent was. My intent was, the city has good parkland down here that they've invested in, they've added more in. Allen Park was not, not taken care of, it just didn't really have any amenities from any perspective and at a major intersection, I don't see it as a viable place to have a park. I mean, if you stand at that intersection, it's extremely noisy, I drive through there two to four times a day. I certainly wouldn't want to hang out at a park at that location. I think our issue before us is to look at what's being proposed for the use in the site plan, how it fits in. So, we're, we're not at our deliberation, but we have good comments here, good questions. So any other questions for Eric? Okay, hearing none, let's hear from the applicant who's waited patiently for a long time. Even for being the last guy, you're about an hour ahead of where we're usually at.
Yeah.
Josh Troxton, Civil Design Advantage, thirty-four oh-five, Southeast Crossroads Drive, Grimes, Iowa.
Okay.
I'm representing Scotty's Body Shop, Scotty Buchanan. Um, I know, like you, we've already went through, the city was the applicant on this. However, part of the process of going through this is getting the approval of the variance prior to actually proceeding with the acquiring this property. Couple items are, I don't know the specifics of the acquisition of the property or the vacation of the parkland, so I can't really go into any details on that if you have questions. I can go into details concerning the setback. The layout of the site was based off of staff's direction on meeting that Downtown Overlay District. And if you actually read, and it's in the staff's recommendations and reports, their recommendation is to a commercial building to have at least seventy percent of the building frontage within one foot of the right-of-way. So that, that's the reason we're actually requesting this variance. It isn't something that we want to do, I guess, a special account, we're trying to meet the actual Downtown Overlay District and that violates the M1, um, actual zoning. Also, part of those things, I know landscaping was an issue with you. We're, we're actually required with that Downtown Overlay District to meet the C-three landscaping requirements, not even the, the industrial landscaping requirements, and those are actually a little bit more stringent. More landscaping will be required along all of this parking exterior that actually fronts the road. Other than that, I guess I don't have much to add on to staff, we're not in objection of any staff's recommendations or support of them, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Josh?
Oh, the building material, yes.
Yes, yes, 'cause that was going to be mine.
Yep. Currently, again, I'm a civil engineer, our, our firm does civil engineering, Simonson is handling the actual architecture.
Sure.
Right now, from what I understand, it's going to be more of a steel, um, face building, however, all hidden fasteners, it's going to have a downtown overlay, uh, or downtown look to it. And again, through, through staff's review of the site plan, they're going to have a chance to say it's good to go or not good to go.
Okay.
But as, as far as I know, this is going to be more of a structural or a horizontal panel steel.
Right.
And we're still going back and forth, or I think the owner's going back and forth with, with Simonson Associates on what materials to select.
And, uh, and Josh, I know you can't comment much on this, but I'm guessing it just won't be like standing seam Morton Building sides or something like that?
Right, right now, I think they're actually talking about horizontal seam and, and, or horizontal panels.
Right.
And you, and you shouldn't be able to actually see that seam, it should be hidden.
Okay.
So it will have a little bit architectural feel to it.
Sure.
It's not going to be a, a post-frame building that you see.
So kind of a modern but retro industrial look, probably?
That's what they're going for.
Okay.
And then even there's, they're providing a parapet up here along the top side and that's just to provide that more commercial feel of the building.
Sure. Josh, could you put the site plan back up there quick? I see you have a fenced area, which I assume is where the cars to be repaired will be stored on the southern portion. Will that fence be required to have slot work or opaque screening on it?
That fence will actually be an architectural solid fence, it won't even be a chain link.
Okay, okay. So at night or even during the day, we might have customers or employees parking there on the periphery, but a smashed-up car is going to be on the inside of the gate?
Correct, correct.
All right. That's excellent.
The gates will probably be open a majority of the time. Drive-up clients will actually probably park in the front.
Sure.
Because the actual estimate base are going to be located right here next to the office. This is the actual area where they do their actual repairs. So, yeah, this will be used for more storage vehicles that might have to pull in and out.
And that existing building on the southwest, the old, I don't know what I'd call it, the maintenance building for the park, is that just a little homage to what used to be there to keep that?
The goal of the owner, I asked him the same thing on it, the goal of the owner is to, uh, utilize that for his lawn care or,
Sure.
basically the greenskeeping of the actual site.
Okay. Well, there's a continuance there then.
I just have one question, if you go back to your plan, where are the ventilation units and the air conditioning? I didn't see it on the roof.
Um, currently, we're not showing them, but of course, if they're not on the roof, they will be screened accordingly, according to the overload or the district.
Even if they are on the roof, they would require screening too?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
No, that's what I meant by that.
But you're saying you'll, you'll meet them?
Both scenarios, they're going to be, going to be screened. If they're on the ground, there'll be landscaping or a fence around them. If they're on the roof, they, they either need to be underneath, sorry, this, uh, this basically little parapet wall here.
Okay.
It didn't really look high enough, that's why I asked.
And we know typically with paint booths and so forth, there'll probably be vent, ventilation.
Right, fans, blowers.
So will that have to be shown in your?
If it's a mechanical unit, it'll have to be screened, otherwise we usually like them to be colored to blend in with the roof, you know, if it's just a ventilation, uh, outlet or...
Like a white pipe, paint it to match the color of the roof or something, okay. Any other questions for Josh? Okay, all right, is there anybody else to speak here in support of the applicant? To speak in opposition of the applicant? Any further comments from staff? I do have one question for staff, I trust on the facade, materials, architecture, you'll make sure that it looks really, really good?
The Downtown, uh, Design Guidelines are going to ensure some of that to some extent. The other component that comes into play on that is the tax abatement standards, if they're applicable, so.
Right, right.
That usually incentivizes higher quality materials and construction, so.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. Comments, thoughts?
I would move staff recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, motion carries four to one. Opposed? Okay, all right. Motion carries four to one. Okay, other business? I would assume we have to approve minutes from last month. Those who were in attendance last month can make a motion for approval.
Move.
And can vote. Okay, we got a motion by Cindy, second by Linda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, yeah. All those in favor can vote. That was three, four of us, I think, there? Four of us? Okay. Okay, anything else?
I think it only takes, takes a simple majority to approve your minutes, right?
Elections? Yes, yeah, simple majority, that's all we had. We have elections again? Okay, so we have to, we have to permanently, or we have to elect a chair for the next year?
Right.
Okay.
And a vice chair.
And a vice chair for the next year, just to be, okay.
Do we, Roger, do you know if it makes sense to do a second vice chair, or is this not...
No, we've never gone that deep. Okay, do we have anyone who would like to be the chair of this board? If so, please nominate yourself. Okay, hearing none. Is there anybody that wants to renominate what I would call the acting chair?
Yes, I'll nominate the acting chair.
Okay, we got, all right, we've got a nomination in second. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, I'm going to abstain. Motion carries, was that four?
You can vote.
All right, fine, I'll vote for myself, since it's, since it's a landslide. Okay, let's go ahead then. Linda was the vice chair. I don't know that that was, that was acting because I had been temporarily promoted, but I'd like to nominate Linda to continue on as vice chair.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
She'll have to be sure to go on a fishing trip, so she gets some credit.
That's right, to Canada.
He's always here, so.
Okay, anything else we need to do? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for those who are watching today, and have a good evening. Okay. Roger, thank you.